To speak for this meeting as Tom had mentioned, then they would have submitted speaker cards. And the meeting is being recorded.
Okay, I, I, it just popped up on, uh, on the Facebook page now as well. So we, I'll do a real quick summary and then we can, um, get back on track. Yeah.
Of the Juneteenth?
Uh, yeah, so we already did the, uh, the roll call, uh, announced, uh, uh, did, did a roll call for the quorum. Yeah, started at seven oh five P M., uh, had some issues with streaming online, so now we have it squared away. And during the, uh, announcements section after Councilman, uh, Jean Crouppa did the pledge of allegiance. And Tom, can you go back over the Juneteenth announcement, please?
Sure, uh, Juneteenth celebration this year will be Saturday, June nineteenth, uh, between ten A M. and twelve P M. Uh, we're gonna have a walk, a peace walk, that will begin here at City Hall and end at Jenny Lane Park, uh, where we will have snacks, music and more fun. Bring your lawn chair. Um, and what you're seeing on the screen are, uh, is an example of the posters that we've had posted around town. Uh, the mayor had asked to get a PDF, I think, file, uh, which I'll ask Debbie to do in the morning.
All right, I appreciate it. Any, any questions, comments, uh, remarks from council? All right, go ahead. Oh, okay. Um, there, any other announcements, events? There being none, moving on to proclamations. It looks like we have five proclamations for this month. Uh, and the first one is a proclamation in, in memory of Hunter Hartman. Um, and that proclamation reads as follows. Whereas on behalf of the City of Manor, I wish to record our deep sorrow over the passing of Miss Hunter Hartman on April sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. And whereas Miss Hunter was a beloved daughter, friend, and devoted victim service specialist for the City of Manor. And whereas Miss Hunter recently graduated from Baylor University with her master's degree in social work. And whereas she grew up near Bastrop County and graduated from Bastrop High School. And whereas Miss Hunter was dedicated to a life of service, particularly to victims of crime and those experiencing mental health crisis. And whereas she served beside the Manor Police Department officers in providing compassionate and caring assistance to our community. And whereas the City of Manor, along with the Manor Police Department, are blessed to have known her and been a part of her life. And now therefore I, Dr. Larry Wallace Junior, Mayor of the City of Manor, Texas, and on behalf of the Manor City Council, in recognition of Hunter Hartman's contributions to our city and its citizens, do hereby express our deep appreciation for her dedication to the community and extend her family, our sincere sympathy upon her passing. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Manor to be affixed this fifth day of May twenty twenty-one. Signed, Dr. Larry Wallace Junior, Mayor, City of Manor. And this proclamation will go to our chief, uh, Ryan Sepps, um, to, um, hopefully be able to, uh, bestow to her family, uh, for this unfortunate passing. Um, eh, eh, within the, within the Manor family. Um, any, any remarks from, from council on this one? I know this is, uh, a very personal proclamation, uh, so I definitely want to, uh, be respectful and open to Florida council if they have any additional remarks they want, they would like to add.
Condolences to the family, um, uh, it's just not for, uh, an easy thing to, to lose a loved one. And, um, knowing hearing her passion for people and her passion to help people at the funeral from her families and friends was, was touching and moving and, you know, just thankful that, uh, we had her for our community and, and with our, with our team for the time that we did have her.
Manor community was very lucky to have her.
Any, any, any remarks from, uh, City Hall staff? I know, um, we, we were all at the, uh, at the, at the funeral, but definitely want to be respectful. Yeah, y- you all worked with her day in and day out, uh, and, and any remarks from you all that y'all want to have or, uh, uh, and want to say?
Uh, simply that we're always shocked when something like this happens and, um, the work that she did for us was recognized and appreciated by those who worked with her. And Chief may have more to say.
Uh, I just wanted to thank all of y'all that came to her services and all the, uh, prayers and, uh, and thoughts y'all have been offering for our employees and her family. It was, uh, uh, very appreciated and, you know, it's just a difficult thing to, to go through, losing a, uh, an employee and, and somebody you work with so closely. So, thank y'all for your compassion.
Definitely. All right, um, next proclamation, uh, and, and Chief, make sure you definitely, when, when you, when you hand that proclamation over again, give, give our, uh, condolences and, um, uh, re- reaffirm to them that we're here, uh, that support wherever we can. Um, next, next proclamation is for National Preservation Month. Uh, the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation established May as Historic Preservation Month in nineteen seventy-three as a way to promote historic places for the purpose of, of instilling nation and community pride, promoting heritage, uh, tourism and showing the social and economic benefits of historic preservation. And whereas a historic preservation month can instill awareness of the local historically significant buildings and landmarks to the residents of Manor and surrounding communities. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. Now therefore I, Dr. Larry Wallace Junior, Manor City of Manor, and on behalf of the Manor City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May twenty twenty-one as National Preservation Preservation Month and call upon the people of Manor to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observation. Proclaim this the fifth day of May twenty twenty-one. Signed, Dr. Larry Wallace Junior, Mayor, City of Manor. And the next proclamation is, um, for the Asian Pacific, uh, American Heritage Month. And this proclamation reads as follows. Whereas during Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, we celebrate the indelible mark these individuals have left on our culture and pay tribute to the myriad ways in which they continue to strengthen our nation. And whereas Americans of Asian and Pacific Islander descent have made significant contributions to every aspect of our society, from business and politics to literature and the arts. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have a rich heritage thousands of ye- thousands of years old and have both shaped the history of the United States and had their lives dramatically influenced by moments in its history. And whereas this month, we recognize the more than twenty million Americans of Asians and Pacific Islander descendant, uh, descent who made irrepl- irreplaceable contributions to our nation's economy, security and culture. Now therefore I, Dr. Larry Wallace Junior, Mayor of the City of Manor, Texas, and on behalf of the Manor City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May twenty twenty-one, Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. In the City of Manor, and encourage all citizens to learn more about those of Asian American, Native, Hawaiian and Pacific Islander heritage and to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause a seal of the City of Manor to be affixed this fifth day of May twenty twenty-one. Signed, Dr. Larry Wallace Junior, Mayor, City of Manor. Uh, next proclamation is for Municipal Clerks Week. Proclamation is for the fifty-second Annual Professional Municipal Clerk Week and reads as follows. Whereas the Office of the City Secretary, a time honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world. And whereas the Office of the City Secretary is the oldest among public servants and provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the City Secretary serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the City Secretary through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the City Secretary. Now therefore I, Dr. Larry Wallace Junior, Mayor of the City of Manor, and on behalf of the Manor City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May second to May eighth, twenty twenty-one as Municipal Clerks Week. And further extend appreciation to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Proclaim this the fifth day of May twenty twenty-one. Signed, Dr. Larry Wallace Junior, Mayor, City of Manor. And you, you know, this one goes to you. Um, next is for Police Week. Uh, and this proclamation reads as follows. Uh, well, recognizing National Police Week twenty twenty-one and honoring the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in line of duty while protecting U.S. communities and safeguarding our democracy. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas there are approximately eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including all dedicated Manor Police Officers. And whereas since the first recorded line of duty death in seventeen eighty-six, more than twenty-two thousand law enforcement officers to the United States have been the ultimate, have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in line of duty. Currently, there are twenty-two thousand six hundred and eleven names engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C. And whereas three hundred and ninety-four names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including two hundred and ninety-five officers killed in twenty twenty and ninety-nine officers killed in previous years. And whereas of the two hundred and ninety-five officers killed in twenty twenty, on average, left behind two children. And whereas Texas and municipalities were the highest in the nation with the most officer fatalities. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund Thirty-third Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May thirteenth, twenty twenty-one in the nation, in the nation's capital. Now therefore I, Dr. Larry Wallace Junior, Mayor of the City of Manor, and on behalf of the Manor City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May ninth through fifteenth, twenty twenty-one as Police Week. And the City of Manor publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. And be a further resolve that the downtown Manor water towers shall be lit in blue from May, from May ninth to May fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Proclaim this the fifth day of May twenty twenty-one. Signed, Dr. Larry Wallace Junior, Mayor, City of Manor. And Chief, of course, this one, this one goes to you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, and now going to, do we have any public comments?
We do not.
All right, going to public hearing. Uh, first public hearing is discussion on the approval of a service and easement plan for the Manor Heights Public Improvement District, Tom?
Uh, Mayor, this and the, uh, few following public hearings, we can open and close. We have a number of folks, uh, signed up to speak, uh, for these items on the agenda further, further on.
Uh, okay, so you're saying that we open them all together and then?
No, I, I'm.
No.
Each one of them is different, so they should be opened and closed separately.
Okay, got it. All right, so I announce the first public hearing open, um. Who, who's it, Tom or who?
Well, we can move forward and just a motion to close a public hearing if no one signed up to speak. And again, the folks that are signed up tonight are wanting to speak under the items later on on the.
Oh, actually under the agenda, okay.
Yes.
Do you have a motion to close public hearing, number one?
Mayor, I'm making a motion, we just, we close public hearing discussion, number one, as per the agenda.
All right, is there a motion to have a second?
I second.
And.
Mayor, if you can.
Go ahead.
Mayor Wallace, if you can just confirm with your city secretary to make sure that there are no, that there's no one just signed up to speak, just, um, or administrator for you.
Okay, uh, you have anybody?
I don't, I only have, um, they've signed up only if there's any questions by mayor or council.
Got it, um.
But if anyone wants to speak out there that's out there, uh, that wants to speak, go ahead. I mean, I'm not sure what.
Okay, um. Roll call, please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Ware?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouppa?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, going to opening public hearing number two, discussion on proposed assessments to be levied against accessible property with the major improvements area, improvement area number one and improvement area number two of the Manor Heights Public Improvement District pursuant to the provisions of Chapter three seventy-two of the Texas Local Government Code. Uh, do we have anybody, um, uh, here to speak on that? Going once, going twice.
Is Ray gone here? Is he online?
I am, I'm here just to answer questions.
Okay. Okay.
All right, um, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to close public hearing, um, to discussion on proposed assessments to levy against accessible property with major improvement area, improvement area number one, improvement area number two of the Manor Heights Public Improvement District pursuant to provisions of Chapter three seventy-two of the Texas Local Government Code.
All right, it's been probably motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A second.
And seconded by Councilman Crouppa, uh, questions to the motion, questions to the motion, there being none, roll call, please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Ware?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouppa?
Yes.
All right, moving on to public hearing number three, which is now open for discussion on the issuance of Special Assessment Revenue Bonds Series twenty twenty-one, Manor Heights Public Improvement District Major Improvement Area Project. Do I have, uh, anybody, uh, to speak, going once, going twice? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm motion to close the public hearing discussion on the issuance of Special Assessment Revenue Bonds Series twenty twenty-one, the Manor Heights Public Improvement District Major Improvement Area Project.
All right, is there probably motion to have a second?
Second.
And seconded, uh, questions to the motion, questions to the motion, roll call, please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Ware?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Come on, yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouppa?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, uh, going to public hearing number four, I now, announce this public hearing open, which is to discussion on the issuance of Special Assessment Revenue Bonds Series twenty twenty-one, Manor Heights Public Improvement District Improvement Area Number One through Two Project. Um, do I have anybody, uh, here to speak on this, going once, going twice? Do I have a motion to co- close the public hearing?
Mayor, I make a motion, we close the public hearing for discussion on the issuance of Special Assessment Revenue Bonds Series twenty twenty-one, Manor Heights Public Improvement District Improvement Area Numbers One and Two Project.
All right, is there probably motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded, any questions to the motion, any questions to the motion, there being none, roll call, please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Ware?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouppa?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, properly passed. Moving on to the consent agenda, all the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory. By the council and will be enacted with one motion, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless requested by myself or a fellow council member, in which event the item will be removed and the consent agenda is considered separately. And on the consent agenda, we have consideration, discussion of possible action to approve the City Council minutes April twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, City Council regular meeting, and April twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one, tw- uh, City Council called special session. Um, do I have a motion on the floor?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the City Council minutes from the City Council regular meeting that was held on April twentieth, twenty twenty-one, as well as the City Council called special session that was held on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one.
Is there a property motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded, any questions to the motion, questions to the motion, there being none, roll call, please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Ware?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouppa?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, uh, moving on to the regular agenda, we have item number six, second and final reading, consideration, discussion of possible action on an ordinance zoning two point one three acres, more or less. Lot four, Blue Bonnet Business Park, Section One, and being located at fifteen, seven, two, one, U.S. Highway two ninety east from Agricultural Eight to Heavy Commercial C three.
Mayor, council members, I just wanted to remind you that planning commission had recommended C two and your first reading of the ordinance also, uh, supported C two, so this would be, uh, the second reading at C two.
Okay, um, do I have a motion on the floor? Oh, this is the reading, I'm sorry, um. Any questions? There being none, do I have, um, what I need to do, a motion to, to close the reading?
Uh, to, to, uh, approve C two.
Approve it, okay. Do I have a motion on the floor to approve C two?
Mayor, I'm making a motion that we approve C two zoning for the two point one three acres, more or less, lot four, Blue Bonnet Business Park, Section One, and being located at one, five, seven, two, one, U.S. Highway two ninety east.
All right, it's been probably motion, do I have a second?
A second.
And seconded, any questions to the motion, questions to the motion, there being none, roll call, please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Ware?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouppa?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes, moving on to agenda item number seven, which is consideration, discussion of possible action on a resolution of the City of Manor, Texas, approving and authorizing the First Amendment to the Manor Heights Public Improvement District Reimbursement Agreement Improvement Area Number One and Improvement Area Number Two.
Um, Mayor, council members, um, I'm gonna let our financial team, uh, run through all of these. I think Veronica may start. Uh, you'll probably hear from John Snyder and then some of the folks who have been involved in the uh, bond issuance, uh, over the next few items here on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Veronica Rivera, Assistant City Attorney, uh, with regard to item number seven. Um, this is in a First Amendment to a reimbursement agreement that had already been approved. And, uh, there is one change, actually two changes that we need to make to this agreement that you had received in the backup, and that's because we had, uh, really good pricing and, um, interest rates. So the amounts have changed on page one of the backup, uh, First Amendment that you received. And I just wanted to read, uh, into the record, and if y'all can make the motion as amended by, um, as the, the city, um, by your city attorney with this, uh, information, which is on item number one, section one, on page one, the amount for the improvement area number one reimbursement obligation is now at three million, seven hundred thirty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars. And then the improvement area number two reimbursement obligation is now at three million, five hundred sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars. And to, to provide some additional information on this, um, I'll turn it over to John Snyder.
Thanks, Veronica. Uh, again, John Snyder with P three works for the city's pit administrator. Uh, as Veronica mentioned, the, the interest rate came in better than expected, so that's a, that's a good thing. Uh, and you can think of it just like a house, if you're going to buy a house and you have a lower interest rate, you can afford more house. So the same thing here, we had a lower interest rate on the bonds, uh, which allowed us to finance more improvements basically at the same, uh, annual payment. So that's the good news and that's, that's the result of the, the increase in the reimbursement agreement. Uh, would you prefer I stop there before we go on to, to the next item, or are there any questions on the, on the increase?
I, I would, John, I would do them separately.
Okay.
And the only thing that I will add is that, um, um, Mayor and City Council, we will be back on the nineteenth because, uh, of the interest rates to provide you a First Amendment to the reimbursement improvement agreement for the major improvement area, because this is only covering improvement area one and two. So I just wanted to give, give you a heads up on that. Thank you.
All right, uh, do I have a motion on the floor?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we, uh, make a resolution of the City of Manor, Texas, approving and authorizing the First Amendment to the Manor Heights Public Improvement District Reimbursement Agreement, Improvement Areas One and Improvement Areas Two.
All right, then so motion, do I have a second?
And Jean, if, if you could, um, uh, with, with, okay, as provided by the city attorney, uh, with amendments as provided by the city attorney.
I amend my, uh, recommendation to include the information read by our city attorney regarding the reimbursement agreements for improvement area number one and improvement area number two.
All right, it's been so amended, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Again.
And seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim, uh, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Ware?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouppa?
Yes.
All right, motion pass, uh, agenda item passes. Moving on to agenda item number eight, consideration, discussion of possible action on an ordinance for the City of Manor, Texas, making a finding of special benefits to the property in the Manor Heights Public Improvement District for, providing for the method of assessment of special assessments against property in the district, approving assessment roles for the district, levying assessments against property within the district, providing for payments of the assessments, providing for penalties and interest on delinquent assessments, establishing a lien on property within the district, approving a service and assessment plan, providing for related matters in accordance with Chapter Three, you need to move a car for seventy-two, Texas Local Government Code, providing ineffective date and providing for severability. Good grief.
I can hear, I know that was a mouthful. Um, so, two weeks ago, we were before you to approve the preliminary service and assessment plan, which basically gave our best estimate on where we thought the interest rate on the bonds was gonna come in and, and kind of give it, give us an idea of what we thought the assessment levels were gonna be. Uh, as we discussed, those interest rates came in lower, which is a good thing, causing the assessment amounts to go up. Uh, so as a result, for improvement area one and two, uh, the, the. bond amount or assessment amount is seven million, three hundred and five thousand. And for the major improvement area, it's now gone up to eight million, eighty thousand. Uh, in terms of what that's financing, uh, there's, the the big improvements are, there's a wastewater treatment plant for about five point one million dollars. Uh, there's also about three point one million dollars in mat four roadways. Uh, and then the developers putting in, uh, a substantial amount of money, uh, so in terms of owner contribution, uh, it's, it's nearly twelve million dollars. Uh, and and a lot of that is going for the internals, the bonds are paying for some internal improvements, a total of about three point one million, but the rest of the internal improvements will be coming in from the developer. Um, if there's any questions on, on the improvements or, uh, on the assessments, I can answer those now. Uh, otherwise, I did have some language I wanted, uh, in the motion for the, for the ordinance, just to make sure that we're complying with with statute.
All right, do I have a motion on the floor?
And and Mayor, if I could just say, if if the motion could say that we want to revise the proposed assessment role to the amounts reflected in the current assessment role, that would, that would allow for that increase in assessment.
Okay, so, uh, got it, so the motion needs to include that, um, further revise the assessment role, got it. Do I have a motion on the floor?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance of the city of Maynor, Texas making a finding of special benefit to the property and Maynor Public, Maynor Heights Public Improvement District, providing for the method of assessment, of special assessments against the property in the district, approving the new assessment roles for the district, loving assessments against the property within the district, providing for payment of the assessments, providing for penalties and interest on delinquent assessments, establishing a lien on property within the district, applying, approving a service and assessment plan, providing for related matters in accordance with chapter three, seven, two, local, Texas Local Government Code, providing an effective date and providing for severability.
Yes, see, you, 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 you experienced what I experienced, right? Uh, all right, this has been so motioned, uh, do I have a second?
Um, with the revised motion?
Yeah, he, he said that, uh, in there. Um, yeah, it was all part of, he just adjusted it in the middle.
Councilmember Crouppen added a word in with the assessment, the updated assessment.
Right. Um, it's been, it's been probably motioned, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, and seconded, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion?
I had a question.
Up, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm speaking closer to the mic. Uh, so I just wanted to understand, John, you were saying that this is just a full reassessment of that area so that they can determine the levying, the, um, all those other, wait, scrolling back up, but all those things that they, that happens with an assessment, so that'll be like a new are the homeowners paying for that assessment, or I guess what happens?
Yes, yes ma'am, so right now it's all owned by the developer, uh, but whenever they do sell a home to the, to a home buyer, they'll have to disclose it and tell the folks, here's what your outstanding assessment is, and here's what your annual installment is gonna be. Uh, so right now, we're fixing what that amount is, so once a homeowner moves in, they'll be disclosed what it is, and that amount is never going to increase.
Oh, okay, that's all those words in one sentence, I like that better, thank you, thank you.
Right, I know, he, he just trying to half of us on, on, on doing the motions. All good, uh, any additional questions? There being none, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouppen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, uh, agenda passes, moving on to agenda item number nine, consideration, discussion of possible action on an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the city of Maynor, Texas Special Assessment Revenue Bonds, series twenty twenty-one, Maynor Heights Public Improvement District Major Improvement Area Project, approving, authorizing, and indenture of trust, a bond purchase agreement, a limit offering memorandum, a continuing disclosure agreement, and other agreements and documents in connection therewith, making findings with respect to the issuance of such bonds, providing an effective date.
Thank you, Mayor, so I think we're gonna discuss probably items number nine and ten together, um, but I think you can, you can take the motion separately, but I think the discussion can kind of uh, run together, I think before we let F M S talk about the, uh, exciting news on the pricing, um, if if we can let Chris Lane uh, discuss the economic development aspects, and and I, and I do just want to say that, uh, for me personally, we've been working on this transaction, I think since twenty seventeen. Uh, it's gone through multiple developers, it's gone through multiple name changes, uh, but but it has been good to be working with staff uh, for this long, and actually see it through the finish line, uh, so for for everybody from, from city team to the uh, financial advisor, underwriters, bond counsel, and developer team, uh, it's really been, been nice to actually see this thing, uh, through the finish line, so Chris, I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, John. Just as a reminder, I just wanted to walk through what's going to be in this project and the economic development that will take place in the city, um, for the major improvement area, there'll, there will be approximately seven hundred and thirty-five homes at a value of two hundred and twelve million plus, three hundred and seventy condos at seventy-five million plus, almost sixty-nine thousand square feet of office space at about fourteen million, seventeen hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and fifty square feet of restaurant space for about three and a half million, a hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five square feet of retail space that'll be about thirty-plus million. And then since we're gonna talk about these all together, area one, the other item is improvement area one and improvement area two. In improvement area one, there's about two hundred and sixty-four single-family homes for about seventy-five million. Um, in area two, about two hundred and fifty-one single-family homes at seventy-one or almost seventy-two million. If you add all that together, that's four hundred and eighty-two million estimated assessed value that would be added to the city's tax rolls over the next several years, and right now, the developer's projecting that some of these, they're gonna start coming on in twenty twenty-two, um, and the majority of the single-family and the condos will be done by twenty twenty-nine, and then commercial um, in retail and office space somewhere in between those years.
You said twenty twenty-nine and and, uh, between what years, between now and twenty twenty-nine?
Twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-nine is what they're projecting, that's what's in the bond documents.
Okay, uh, do they have a timeline in there, at least with the, what, I guess, call it kind of the, the phase projection of this four hundred plus million, uh, in increased tax? So is there, is there a rollout of how much they think in twenty twenty-two versus twenty twenty-five versus twenty twenty-seven?
In the document, I'm going to have to exit the full screen, let's see. In the bond document, the, what everybody was calling the P L O M,
Mm-hmm.
Um, they talk about what's going to be done in the quarters, I'm trying to find it now. Like, uh, fifty, the fifty-foot lots in area two, let me find area one here, fifty-foot lots, two hundred and sixty-four fifty-foot lots started in twenty twenty-two and done by twenty twenty-three. And on area two, they're saying hundred and seventy-six fifty-foot lots, starting in twenty-three and finishing in twenty twenty-four, um, and seventy-five, fifty-five foot lots in twenty twenty-three, ending in twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Major improvement areas, it's kind of, they've got phase three, four, and five. So phase three is about two hundred and eighty-five single-family lots and a hundred and five condos that are gonna start in twenty twenty-five and finish in twenty twenty-six for the single-family, and the condos will finish in twenty twenty-seven. Phase four, fifty and fifty-five foot lots will start in twenty twenty-six, third quarter and finishing third quarter twenty twenty-seven. And phase five, a hundred and ninety-seven single-family lots that'll finish, start in quarter, the first quarter of twenty-eight and finish in the first quarter of twenty-nine. And then somewhere in there, um, let me get back to the, my screen, um, the, as they get interest in the commercial, that will come on at some point.
Okay, uh, Tom, this, this may be a, a side, uh, question, and and definitely nothing that, that I have to answer right now, but with that, with that kind of timeline, something to definitely take into consideration as we're talking about the, the twenty fifty plan, and we're talking about the other areas that that were, we were discussing during the workshop today. Uh, with this i- increased, uh, in- income coming in, is it still really a wash based upon growth of population, inflation, those types of things? Or was it something that we're actually gonna be able to capitalize on and 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 fill in some of the gaps where where we have already identified needs at, so?
Well, it, it's not gonna be a wash, certainly, and and we will capitalize on more than a couple of things, number one would be a wastewater treatment facility that's a part of this development that will allow for development to the east, and so, um, this does afford some benefits off of or outside of the pit with regard to infrastructure that's being provided with the pit.
Okay, all right, yeah, I, I appreciate the breakdown on the information and stuff, um, uh, so we can probably allow other council members to speak to this, do I have a motion on the floor?
Mayor, I'd like to have Veronica answer a question for me, please, before I can make a motion.
Yes, sir.
Great woman.
You, you, you had, uh, the, 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 the motion with the question, uh, uh, as a contingent, so that way we can, we can probably have it as motion to actually be up for discussion. That, that's, that's the only main piece on here.
You want a motion, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. I wanna make motion that we approve the ordinance authorizing issuance of the city of Maynor, Texas Special Assessment Revenue Bonds, series twenty twenty-one, Maynor Heights Public Improvement District Major Improvement Area Project, approving and authorizing an indenture of trust, a bond purchase agreement, a limited offering memorandum, a continuing disclosure agreement, and other agreements and documents in connection therewith, making findings with respect to the issuance of such bonds, providing an effective date.
All right, so motion, do I have a second?
Again.
And seconded, questions to the motion, Jean?
I have a question. I was looking over, I was looking over the Maynor Heights pit SAP documentation in exhibit B four, the major improvement area boundaries. All that land is Sky Village Kimbrough Estates, and there's no statement in, in the document stating that this is part of Maynor Heights. The boundaries that they give for that exhibit, still have it as Sky Village Kimbrough Heights Estates, I should say. Um, and, and, um, looking at the conveyed property is still conveyed to Sky Village Kimbrough Estates or Kimbrough Road Estates. So is a, is there a problem with that, that those, that big piece of land, um, is not documented correctly as belonging to the pit?
And, um, or Chris? John, did I hear you say?
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna respond to that, if if you recall, I mentioned that there were several developers and several name changes, this is one of those, uh, kind of a ca- a carryover item, so the, the developer did used to be, uh, it was it was Sky, it was Sky Village and Kimbrough Estates, and now it's all rolled into Maynor Heights, so their, their legal descriptions at the time that the meets and bounds were done, that, that's what they were called, but the, the, the descriptions are correct, and it's just, uh, they've renamed the project now to, to all be Maynor Heights.
Okay, so, force, was it four-star?
So we have four-star as one of the developers, we also have R H O F, um, actually, R H O F came first um, before four-star, it, uh, um, actually, and Tom can even mention to you that uh, this development has actually been going on for quite some time and had yet another developer prior to this with, uh, with another name, so yes, the, the names, um, and, uh, have changed, but it is still within the, the district boundaries, and, uh, it is, it is owned by those that all have executed these documents. And we have, yeah, no, and we have triple-checked and more than.
Like I said, it was one of those things, I'm reading the document, and there's no mention of having anything changed over, and I was on council when it was the Sky, Sky Village Kimbrough Estates. And that's why I'm asking, I don't want to have any problems with this thing, it being the second one we're doing. And I know we have a good team, it's just one of those things that came up in my review of the documents.
Appreciate the question, yes, appreciate the question, and yes, giving us the opportunity to let you know, um, who the, uh, developers and parties are now at this closing.
Thank you, Veronica, thank you, John.
Any, uh, additional question?
Mayor, this is John again, if if we could let F M S Bonds present, uh, the pricing information, I think, I think y'all will be really interested to hear it, it's, uh, it's pretty impressive, and it's, uh, it's very, uh, I think, good news for the city of Maynor overall.
Okay.
Hi, yeah, this is Trip Davenport with, um, F M S Bonds, the, the city's pit bond underwriter, and as John said, you know, we've been working on this project. I think my first email was back in, in twenty seventeen, and, you know, it evolved over time with multiple developers. And, you know, I'm happy to report to the city that, um, this is one of the most successful pit financings ever done in the state. And your improvement area one, two bonds, uh, came out as number two best price ever. And then your master infrastructure bond is the best-priced master infrastructure bond ever done in the state of Texas. And a lot of that has to do with a very strong developer, but it also has to do a lot with what's taking place at the city, uh, the mayor and council's leadership, and, and to be very honest with you, um, my colleague and I, Robert Rivera, brought in some investors several years ago, because we were so excited about the opportunity to work with Maynor. And your city manager, Tom Bolt, and your financial advisor sat and answered questions not specific to this project, but specific to everything going on in Maynor and the future of, of the city. And, you know, the, the investors are extremely impressed with everything going on. And, um, you know, I'm pleased to report that the three largest funds that buy these types of bonds in, in the nation uh, came in for all of the bonds, uh, New Bean Asset Management, Goldman Sachs, and Franklin Fund out of California, all put in orders for all of the bonds. It was extremely exciting for us because we thought we were going in too aggressive, and we thought we'd get some pushback, but, uh, there is, it was such a desirous, uh, location for them to put their money into with a great developer and, and, you know, a really great group of professionals with, uh, Bickerstaff and, and Chris Lane and her crew and, and Veronica, and, and then Tom and his leadership with all the, um, the other staff. So, uh, really want to commend the city, the city staff, city professionals in all that y'all done, and it translated, uh, into a great pricing with, you know, a great developer, so congratulations.
No, I appreciate it, I appreciate you providing that info, information inside, I think that definitely leads to, to some of the conversations that, that we had in our workshop today. Uh, in, in previous conversations we've had, both, uh, in, 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 in meetings, uh, on, uh, like this in council and then, uh, uh, other workshops, um, I, I asked that you, you get with, uh, Tom and, and Scott, and our, our mayor pro tem was the lead for economic development, would, would love to be able to capture that, that information in what was so unique and what was so ideal, and what was maybe the differentiating factor, uh, that led to this? Because I think it's something that, that we need to be able to highlight and be able to message and, and continue to entice others to, to look into this area and to look into the city, uh, because as you said- To, to look into this area and to look into the city, uh, cause as you said, it's something. We're doing made them uh, look as they haven't before. And that's something we need to highlight not only to our community, but we also need to highlight to others.
Now absolutely, and, and again, I wanna commend not only you all, but the, the developer team, uh, you know, they have a great group of professionals and. You know, made through a very difficult circumstance, so congratulations to everyone, we were really excited and honored to be part of this, this financing.
Appreciate it, uh, any other questions? Any additional questions? There being none, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
Alright, agenda passes, moving on to agenda item number eleven, consideration discussion of possible action on a resolution finding.
Mayor, ten, Mayor Wallace.
Ah, ah, okay. We talked about it, my apologies.
Sometimes wishing doesn't make it happen.
You gave everybody a heart attack.
Uh, like, didn't we just talk about this? We're good, no, okay. Oh, agenda item number ten, consideration discussion of possible action on the ordinance authorizing the issuance. Of the city of Maynor, Texas Special Assessment Revenue Bonds Series twenty twenty-one, Maynor Heights Public Improvement District Improvement Area. Number one and two project. Approving and authorizing an indenture of trust, a bond purchase agreement, a limit offering memorandum, a continuing disclosure agreement. And other agreements and documents in connection therewith. Making findings with respect to the issuance of such bonds, providing an effective date. Do I have a motion on the floor?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance authorizing the issuance of. The city of Maynor, Texas Special Assessment Revenue Bonds Series twenty twenty-one. Maynor Heights Public Improvement District Improvement Area One and Two Project. Approving and authorizing an indenture of trust, a bond purchase agreement. A limited offering memorandum, a continuing disclosure agreement. And other agreements and documents in connection therewith, making findings with respect to the issuance of such bonds. Providing an effective date.
It has been uh, properly motioned, do I have a second?
I'll second.
And seconded, questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, agenda item passes, now on to agenda item number eleven, consideration discussion of possible action. On a resolution finding that Encore Electric Delivery Company LLC's application for approval of a. Distribution cost recovery factor pursuant to Texas Administration Code. Twenty-three point two four three to increase distribution rates within the city should be denied, Tom.
Uh, Mayor, council members, uh, this is something that comes up, I think it's annually actually. Uh, and what we're asked to do is, is deny uh. The rate increase and then we become part of the group and, and uh. Whatever assessment is decided on the overall group is what the assessment to the city would be. And so the language on this is a little tricky. In that we're approving a resolution to deny. The Encore Electric Delivery Company's application for approval. Um, is it Armando that's here?
Yes.
Um, and he may wanna speak to this, he's with Encore.
Mayor, how y'all doing? Um, so, so yes, as Mr. Bolt mentioned, the uh. The resolution to deny basically allows us or allows the PUC to receive all of the cities. Uh, in a consolidated form to go ahead and review the assessment of the uh, distribution cost recovery factor rate increase.
Okay, so break that down for the resident in town that probably has no understanding of what those words mean.
Absolutely, so, so the ultimate impact that, say, a resident would see in the area. Uh, it's based on the kilowatt hour, uh, kilowatt hour charge, and so there's expect, you'll expect to see approximately. A two-point-eight percent increase to the current Encore uh, wire charge, so for example. Uh, a typical residential customer who's using thirteen hundred kilowatt hours per month. Will see an increase of about a dollar and thirty-five cents a month.
Okay, got it, I appreciate you giving the breakdown and I'm, I'm gonna put you on the spot here, uh, Armando. Um, on the record here, uh, for the community uh, uh, at large, Armando is the individual that. Uh, we as City Hall were engaging with during the winter storm regarding the Encore power outages and, and the issues. And um, some of the historical trends and Armando and, and his team have been working with. Tom Bolt and Scott Dunlop, uh, 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 you know, um. Regarding uh, some, some upgrades for the stone water area um, to help resolve uh, those continuing issues, so I appreciate you. Uh, in your due diligence, uh, Armando, eh, as far as serving as that liaison bridge between uh. City uh, significant issues and, and your company.
Absolutely.
Alright, that being said, um, do I have a motion on the floor for agenda item number eleven?
Mayor, council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution. Number two, zero, two, one, dash, twelve. To deny the Encore Electric Delivery Company LLC's application. For approval of a distribution cost recovery. Recovery, distribution cost recovery factor pursuant to Texas Administrative Code twenty-three point two four three. To increase distribution rates within the city.
Alright, it's been uh, properly motioned, I have a second?
Second.
And seconded, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, agenda item passes, moving on to agenda item number twelve. Consideration discussion of possible action on a water tower lease and license agreement with. Selco Partnerships DBA doing business as Verizon Wireless. Who's that, Scott?
Yeah, I, Scott, I wasn't sure if Scott was on or not.
Yeah, I, I'm here.
Okay, alright.
That's if you'd like. Um, so, a couple years ago now at this point, you know, Verizon had approached the city and they needed. Uh, or were seeking additional cell service in the area of two ninety in Lexington, or the way Starbucks and all that. Um, and they had proposed a tower, we weren't fans of that idea. Um, but, you know, we ended up, you know, settling on the water tower, it's the unused water tower that's behind Sonic. Um, and so that, that property, it was rezoned to institutional. Um, in advance of a conditional use permit being issued by the council to permit. Um, a cell, cell infrastructure to be located, co-located on the tower. Um, and then it's been about, gosh, like, a year and a half or something like that, but. They've been going off and on about, with our attorneys and working on this agreement, um, as well as doing, um. You know, site prep, they, they got a easement or an agreement to kinda enter to the site to do. Soil testing and paint testing on a tower and, you know, get everything that they needed. Um, but now they, they've, our attorneys and everyone's come to an agreement on this lease. And so we're just seeking, uh, recommending approval for this lease agreement.
Alright, do I have a motion on the floor?
Mayor, I rec- um, make a motion that we approve the water tower lease and license. Agreement with Selco Partnership DBA. Ben Verizon Wireless.
It has been so motioned, I have a second?
I'll second.
And seconded, any questions to the motion?
Mayor, if I, if I could, this is a water tower that we haven't used in many years. Uh, we've been unsuccessful in trying to sell the tower. And when Verizon came to us, I thought we could make some money on a tower that would serve as a base for their. Uh, antenna system and so I'm, I'm glad that we're able to do this because. Verizon was lacking in, in the ability to serve this area and this. Uh, solves their problem without creating a, a tower in the downtown area.
Got it, now, now I just need you to get AT&T and everybody else, um. Alright, um, any additional uh, questions, remarks? There being none, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, mo- agenda item passes, moving on to agenda item number thirteen, consideration discussion of possible action. On a change order to the construction contract for the Walbarger Creek Wastewater Treatment and Collection System Improvements Project.
Uh, Frank is online here to talk about that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, this change order is to the uh, phase one, uh, Walbarger Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant Project. Um, we're nearing completion on that project, um, there are a few minor cleanup pieces. Um, that comprises change order and, uh, the major component is um. Uh, some freeze repairs that uh, needed to be conducted as a result of the storm event uh, that came through. Um, and so, uh, there are three items, first one is the freeze repair work, uh, that was about eighteen thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars. Um, mostly around the filters, um, and then we also had uh, some other drain line revisions and some SCADA system revisions. Actually resulted in a credit of about uh, sixty-six hundred dollars. And uh, the last piece was uh, Texas ability accessibility standards. When they came through and did the audit on the um, locker room for the showers and the public works building. Um, they insisted that there be a bench in, in there to comply with Texas ability stan- accessibility standards. And so the bench was added, so the net uh, change proposed by the change order is thirteen thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Alright, um, do I have a motion on the floor?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the change order to the construction contract for the Walbarger. Creek Wastewater Treatment and Collection System Improvements Project.
Alright, it has been properly motioned, I have a second?
I'll second.
And seconded, questions to the motion? Questions to the motion?
I have a question, so, these, um. So these in repairs that are gonna be done, are they under any kind of warranty or guarantee? That should we have another freeze or anything like that, that we're not gonna be up against this ag- again, Frank?
Well, so, so there were some things that contributed to it, um, I think the, some lessons have been learned. That, that filter, there's the ability to have that filter run more frequently. And so I think in future, if there are gonna be these cold conditions. That, that filter can be set to automatically run more frequently, so it wouldn't freeze up. Now the piping on that, on that filter was all insulated at the time. But, but it was such a bad freeze that it, it literally froze the, the drive gear with the, it's got a chain that's got. Links that big in it, another, they're a polycarbonate chain, but it just, it froze up and snapped the chain. Um, there were manifold pieces on that, 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 we just didn't design in Texas. For, you know, keen weather over, you know, extended periods like that. Normally we get a freeze for a few hours and it's not a big deal, so in the future, I think there's some operational things that we can do differently. That will prevent that from occurring again. Um, and, and basically just set it to cycle, so every half hour it's, it's backwashing and spinning and, and so forth, so. It can be prevented through different operational schemes, but this was, this was something that was new that, you know, we'd never experienced before. Obviously with all the problems that happened as a result of the storm.
Alright, thank you so much for that, Frank.
Any additional questions? There being none, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, agenda passes, agenda item number fourteen, consideration discussion of possible action on a construction contract. For the East US two ninety water line CIP W seventeen in the amount of. Six hundred and sixty thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. Is that Sam?
Yes, yes, Mayor Wallace and Council, uh, this is for the two ninety water line project. It's a sixty-six hundred linear foot sixteen inch ductile iron water line that's gonna serve Maynor Heights in the surrounding area. Uh, the bids were open on April twenty-first and we received ten bids. Atlas Construction was the low bidder at six hundred and sixty thousand eight hundred and twenty-one and thirty-five cents. And uh, we checked their, their financials and their references as far as past work. And they've done this kind of work before and they're financially stable, so we're recommending award of the bid.
Alright, do I have a motion on the floor?
Sure, I'll make the motion, um, recommend that city council approve. And a wall construction contract to Atlas Construction Corporation. For the East US two ninety water line CIP W seventeen. An amount of six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-five cents.
Alright, it's been properly motioned, I have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, and seconded, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, motion passes, agenda passes, moving on to the last agenda item for the night. Fifteen, consideration discussion of possible action on a construction contract. For the Cottonwood Creek Wastewater Collection System Improvement in the amount of two million nine hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, five hundred and fifty-seven. Dollars.
So this, this is, this is for a eleven thousand five hundred linear foot collection line and lift station. That's gonna serve the Maynor Heights area, again, surrounding area. Um, bids were open on April twenty-first also, there were seven bids, low bidder was De Guera Construction LLC. And we checked their references and they have a lot of experience in this kind of work and they're very financially stable, so. We're recommending award of the, the contract to De Guera Construction.
Alright, and let me correct that, that's two million nine hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Right.
Uh, do I have a motion on the floor?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we award the construction contract for the Cottonwood Creek. Wastewater Collection System Improvements in amount of two million nine hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
It has been properly motioned, I have a second?
I'll second.
And seconded, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, agenda item passes, I'll call this meeting adjourned at eight twenty PM, you all have a good evening.
Thank you. You too, Mayor.
Good night, everyone.
Bye.